Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's a City of Palm Coast City Council Business Meeting. It is Tuesday, August 20th, 2019. It is 9:00 a.m. Please join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united out, indivisible, indivisible, and just as one.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Councilmember Branquino.
Here.
Councilmember Cuff.
Here.
Councilmember Howell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Clupus is absent.
All right. We'll now open up to public participation. Any member of the public wish to speak on the agenda, items not on the agenda? You have up to three minutes. Please state your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. I'm wondering how many of you saw the headlines on the paper, Observer, on July the 25th? Says health matters. Yes, health does matter. So, uh, just want to talk briefly about that, too. We appreciate all the help that y'all've done removing the trucks off of Florida Park Drive, but we still have an excessive amount of traffic. Those articles there talks about length of time being exposed to traffic fumes, length of time being exposed to traffic noise, and the harm that it can cause you. So, as y'all are doing your traffic study, I hope you will take that in consideration and do some kind of traffic calming method on Florida Park Drive. Also, haven't heard much about the landscaping that was going to happen over on Florida Park Drive, and I wondered if we could get an update on that. And, uh, vehicles being parked in the driveways on Florida Park Drive, some of them are blocking the sidewalks sometime, and kids are, just yesterday, a kid drove out into the street because he had to go around cars that were parked across the driveway. I don't know how to, how to handle that issue since the people who live there have more cars than their drive can evidently safely park. And there are other places on Florida Park Drive, uh, near Fern, and, and they have sometimes their, their bumpers actually out in the street when they park there, so needs to be some kind of ordinance or something that will address that issue about not blocking the sidewalks and not blocking, not having your vehicle out into the roadway. But anyway, I, like I said, I want to thank you for what you did as far as removing the trucks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Celia Buglisi. Thank you for letting me use my three minutes to all. First of all, I want to say that I attended the wonderful fundraising from the Teens in Flight. It's a wonderful organization that allows our teens to be able to afford, to get their license, pilot license, which is the most expensive they have to confront with, and that is thanks to our founder of Teens in Flight, our, you know, consummated, corona, retired coroner, Jack Howard. I really appreciate that and the chance they're given to the teens. Second, I'm gonna mention the same, thank you, Mr. Howard, for that. I'm gonna mention, mention the same issue that Jack had mentioned in the past. I have a friend that I go and help her because her husband is ill. She lives on one of the streets adjacent to Florida Park Drive. Every time we come in and out, the car, the house in the corner of Florida Park Drive, which faces Florida Park Drive, has six cars on a small driveway on a small house that is a single-family home, which is, they have many residents in the house that go in and out. It is really a hazard to our lives to come out into Florida Park Drive from the traffic that heads south because of these cars. They have all their bumper parked on Florida Park Drive. I think the city needs to address the issue and the liabilities for us because we cannot see the incoming traffic in the corner of Florida Park Drive and Fern Court because of this house. They, they have too many residents. I don't know how, there's a lot of strange things going in that place, but they have many cars, up to six mid- or large-sized cars parked in the driveway. Sometimes they have four, but most of the time it's five or six. So this has to be addressed. It's a hazard for us. I don't know how the city can address when somebody parks their cars on a narrow residential street with their bumpers on the edge of the road, using that half of the public right-of-way to park their cars. And I hope also, this is a third request, I, so I hope also the city does not forget the landscaping for Florida Park Drive and also the working for the buoys for the speeds in our canals because our seawalls for some big places like the Palm Apartments are falling over. These people go in that area of the canals like they are offshore, so some alleged well I didn't know is not posted. So, please come up with some buoys that tell the minimum wake because it's not observed. And we have pictures and videos we have sent to the sheriff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Jim Zimmerman. Live in the Serbian Bellflower Trail down in Seminole Woods. My wife and I purchased property in February of 17, built a home, finished in May of 18. We were very excited to figure out a little loop, 5.7 miles, where we could walk or ride our bicycles, and we noticed they started building the sidewalk and then stopped. My wife and I, Diane, both want to thank you very, very much for completing the entire loop on Sesame. It got finished last week, and we just wanted to say thank you.
Next speaker. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll take it first to Florida Park Drive. Matt, if you want to provide an update just to, for Mr. Carr as well as Ms. Buglisi, I had mentioned this to Matt, actually on my way home from Miami, that there are a lot of roads in Miami that are landscaped very nicely that are sort of a challenge as far as the narrowness of the road, and, and so I've asked our staff to dig really deep to try to find some really creative solutions for that roadway, and Matt had some...
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Regards to the landscaping plan, well, first of all, in regards to the speed signs, moving trucks, those are working. Right now, we're also doing the companion ordinances we spoke of and working with the Sheriff's Department for enhanced enforcement, both for trucks and speed, so that is in process. We have not forgotten that. In regards to landscaping, and to the mayor's point, we're trying to be really creative and do something that really is going to mean something and have a good impact for the residents, but we are working on a landscape plan. We're working on landscape alternatives for gateways, for the right-of-way, and so it's a, needless to say, it's a big project because we're really trying to do something different that, again, is going to make an impact for this different roadway. We are actually going to have an update at the next council meeting on where we're at, so we wanted to keep the community updated that we haven't forgotten. Be happy to speak with you, you know, after the meeting, or you can come visit me and show, I can show you where we're at, but we are making very good progress on that, and we'll hopefully have something here. I think our original timeline was September, October. We're, we're on track for that.
And as far as the waterways, I know that the sheriff has a new marine patrol. Have, can you connect them to make sure that enforcement is happening?
I have, and Commander Williams has actually been out in the canals and observed with the new marine patrol, and they're coming up with a signage enforcement and buoy plan that, that actually makes sense. We have some partners to work through, of course, in the waterway, but that is underway and is occurring.
Right. And as far as vehicles blocking a sidewalk, Bill, that's probably a question for you.
Yeah, that's just a matter of, if we can, if we could get some, some information about locations, then we will get code enforcement out there. We've got some regulations right now on the books that might be very helpful. Generally, the, the types of violations are going to be if you're not parking on your driveway, but if you're, if you're blocking the right-of-way and the, and, and the sidewalks, then that could be an issue as well. So we'll, if we can get some information about the addresses, that would be very helpful. We'll look into it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for your comments about the sidewalks. We're very proud of our sidewalks as well. Just for information, we have 125 miles of connected sidewalks through our community. We continue to build on that connectivity. Really, our residents value that piece of infrastructure, so we are very proud, and we always like to hear from our residents. So thank you for coming out today to share your experience with us. Okay, we will now move to Agenda Item Number E1, which is approval of the minutes of August 6, 2019 Business Meeting, and August 13, 2019 Workshop. Do I have a motion?
I approve it. Second it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number F2 is a presentation, a donation of an AED from Advent Health for use at the Indian Trails Sports Complex.
Gentlemen, so how come? I might be slow, but I'm old. Good, good morning. My name is Tony Papandrea. I know most all of you. I'm chairman of the Advent Health Foundation, and I am here representing the hospital, got Wally DiQuino, our chief operating officer, and John Subers, executive director, along with representatives from our community Little League. And I am here as a, just a spokesman for, we're here because Dr. McKinley made a request to our foundation, and we were able to fulfill it. And rather for I to stand here and tell you the story, I am going to turn it over to Wally and let Wally tell you about it. So, Wally?
Thank you, Tony. So, Dr. McKinley was, he's highly involved with the baseball teams here locally because his kids are participating, and he was sensitive about the security for some of the kids in terms of if they needed, or if there was an accident and they needed the AED. So, he witnessed a scene of somebody getting hit with a ball, actually, and that was one of the questions, if one of these equipment was available in a park. I don't believe that it was in one of our parks locally, but that's where he got the idea, and he said, you know what, if we don't have it in our county, we better look into it. So he reached out, and we appreciate that because we want to make sure that our community is safe and our kids are safe. And so, we were very glad that Dr. McKinley took the time to look into it, and I reached out to John Subers, and here we are. We're taking care of what we need for our community. It is a small gesture, but we take safety very serious, and we also partner with the county for other parks to have the same equipment. And so, thank you for the opportunity for us to come and share this with you and the community because we think it's important for others to start thinking the same way. And now I want to turn over to Tony.
Yes, and introduce Fred Lewis, and Fred is representative of the Little Leagues.
I am.
Have at it.
Thank you. We certainly would just like to thank Advent Health. There's been incidents where this would have come in handy at the field, not only for kids, but for adults on site. It'll be available to anybody at the park, I'm sure, as long as someone's there, so I, I think that's a great plus for us, and our registration is going up again, so thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. We just want to thank you for our partnerships with both Advent Health and Palm Coast Little League. This AED will be housed at the concession stand at Indian Trails with Palm Coast Little League. I did want to share a recent story of how important our AEDs are in public facilities. Just last week, our guards responded with an AED to a woman who fainted on our pool deck. The woman is okay, but luckily, thankful for these public access AEDs, everything was safe in that situation, so thank you.
Well, just a thank you on behalf of this city council and our community for your partnership. We obviously value our Little League tremendously. They provide a valuable service to our youth, spend a lot of time volunteering out at our complex and our fields, and Advent Health Hospital is such a great collaborative partner. We could not be more proud of, of our relationship with them. So, thank you very much, and keep doing great things. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for making the permitting easy, and hopefully we'll never use it.
Yes. Okay, Agenda Item Number G3 is an ordinance. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mayor. This is an ordinance to the City Council, City of Palm Coast, order sunsetting the Leisure Services Advisory Committee, or LSAQ, and repealing Chapter 2, Division 3, Leisure Services Advisory Committee of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for conflicts, non-codification, and providing for an effective date.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Again, this is the final reading of sunsetting our Leisure Services Advisory Committee and transitioning into our future Parks and Recreation Foundation.
Council, any questions or discussion on this item? Open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number G3? Please do so at this time.
Just one comment. Let's see, this, my name is Celia, and she, she's doing a wonderful work. I have to say that as a resident. And, and I would, I would expect that probably in the future, there will be a lot of public information regarding that committee or whatever is, is the foundation for volunteerism or whatever, how it's going to be handled. So people knows and join, and on, on social media, we can also help promote people to come and join or help. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Close public comment. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Buglisi. That was very helpful. Okay, I'll take it back to this council. Do I have a motion?
Yes. Move to adopt this ordinance?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number G4 is an ordinance. Mr. Reichman.
Mayor, this is an ordinance to the City Council, City of Palm Coast, order providing for the amendment of the City of Palm Coast 2035 Comprehensive Plan as previously amended. This is pursuant to Section 163, 3187 Florida statutes. Remending the future land use map for flume designation for 119 acres, more or less of certain real property from residential, low-density rural estate, Flagler County future land use designation, to residential City of Palm Coast future land use designation, as described in more detail in the legal description, which is an exhibit to this ordinance. This ordinance amends a note on the future land use map to limit the lands designated as residential in the application, number 3952, planning area, to 1,150 residential units. Lastly, provides for conflicts, ratification, a prior acts, codification, severability, and an effective date. Mayor, Council, this is second reading of a legislative matter.
Good morning, City Council members. Ray Diner, Deputy Chief Development Officer. This is the second reading of this item. As you recall, the companion item, which is the next item, is the Master Plan Development Agreement. When these lands were annexed, the original plan was to have them incorporated into the Grand Landings Master Plan Development Agreement. However, after neighborhood meetings, the developer decided not to add the recently annexed lands into the development agreement for the Master Plan Development Agreement, and rather have a planning area that limits the total units to 1,150. This application did go to the state. The Department of Economic Opportunity and other agencies as well has reviewed it, and there was no opposite, opposition from the state agencies. City staff is ready for adoption of this item, and we are here for questions, and also the applicant is in the audience as well.
Does the applicant wish to make any comments? Okay. Open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number G4? Please do so at this time.
My name is Celia Buglisi, and as usual, the city's doing a great job preserving our quality of life. I was in the meeting, which the residents were present, and so was Mr. Chumento as well, and was the developer, and there was one thing that the residents wanted, and which I have experienced myself, because I've been in that pool where, in, in, in the Landings neighborhood, it's very little for the amount of houses they have, and the, and the residents here were concerned that, that when there is this, all this new additions of new units, they wanted to make sure that they will enlarge also their activities, whatever, or pool, or, or those type of facilities that an HOA gives, certain HOA gives to their residents, okay? So they were concerned about that they had a small HOA, I would say, places like pools and, and whatever they have. I have seen only their pool is pretty small, so that's all.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
My name is Robert Meyer. I live at 117 South Cooper's Hawk Way in Grand Landings. Actually, this particular ordinance was kind of a surprise that it's back on the agenda, and I'm not really sure I understand exactly what it means that it's on the agenda, but let me say this. The current Grand Landings is built out of 749 homes. The current amenities, and when I talk amenities, I'm talking about some of the infrastructure, such as the main gate and things of that sort that support the entire community, are grossly inadequate to support 749 units that are currently approved before either one of these two amendments are approved. So I believe, now, and I know you technically can't drive out there and look around, at least that's what I was told by the planning board, which is the next one that presents this to start out with, and approves it and then moves it to the council. But I believe that it is real obvious, if you were to go out there, the amenity center has 10, that's 10, parking places to support 749 units, or roughly 2,000 people, currently approved. Now we're looking to, to raise up to 1,150, I just heard. The other amendment takes it up to 890 units. The amenities and the gating structure and those things do not support that type of increase, and it needs to be the developer's responsibility to step up and commit to do those things necessary to support that. Now currently, we have a so-called private community that, that the developer insists that the gates remain open from 10 o'clock in the morning until 6 o'clock at night every day. Now, that doesn't sound like a private community. During that time period, anybody can drive in. He wants the gate open so he can sell more lots because people can drive in and look around. Well, anybody can drive in. We had people drive in that go fishing in the lakes. People that drive in go in the woods and stuff picking berries, the palm berries, and reselling them from palm trees. We had people coming in, riding their bikes around the community. We had people stopping and looking at homes under construction. So there's no control by the developer insisting these gates be open. So I'll have more to say during the next amendment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Good morning. George Mayo, Palm Coast. My question is, is recycled water from the city available to this new development? And if it is, is the developer required to use it? And if it isn't there, can the city extend the lines wherever they may be to make use of this that's available? Thank you.
Your comments. Next speaker. None, I'll close public comment. I just, I guess ask...
Yeah, Mayor, a lot, a lot of the comments and some of the questions are really geared toward the zoning portion. Again, this is the future land use map amendment, the land use decision, and because these lands were annexed, we're obligated to make the equivalent land use change of what's consistent with the surrounding area and what meets our future land use map. So basically, the properties were annexed, and we are proposing a land use of residential, which is consistent of what that use was for the county, and also limiting the number for the total area to 1,150 units.
Just explain that a little bit more.
Well, when, when property is annexed into the City of Palm Coast, there is a county future land use designation on that property, and there's also a county zoning designation on that property. So when a piece of property is annexed into the City of Palm Coast, we're obligated to do a comprehensive land use change for that land use to make it the city designation of the future land use. And in this case, it was a, a county type of residential use that went to the city's residential use, basically, an equivalent land use designation that we're obligated to do.
Mayor, if I could add in, I guess one of the ways I always think about this is that we're not getting into the level of detail, we're not getting into the weeds yet when you're amending your comprehensive plan. You're looking...
You're looking at just general land use, more at the 10,000, you've heard the cliche, you're more at the 10,000 feet. This is a legal requirement under the state statute, just to make it conform to our comprehensive plan. It's the next item. It gets into the weeds, if you will, down in the details about exactly what's going to go on the land that's now designated residential.
I understand that. But I'm just, I think since the public, this is a combined item, they've already spoken. I would like to have answers to those items.
Absolutely.
So that would be helpful. So who on our staff is going to answer and respond to the items that were brought up?
Okay. As far as the land use item, that is the next item. You know, there's been several neighborhood meetings, and the planning board, with their recommendation and with City Council's first action, there was several things that were raised as a concern that relates to the zoning itself that were proposed to be changed. Number one, there was a big concern on the height limit of the multifamily apartments or condo, the multifamily outside of the gated community. There was a big concern on the height, and then that was lowered, I think, Jose, to the bill, the next item, I think, to 30, 30 feet. Another issue that was raised was for a construction entrance, so that was incorporated into the development agreement. You know, you heard some of the concerns dealing with the gate. So there is language in the master plan development agreement to have an additional construction entrance on the next phases of development of Grand Landings as well. And then the other issue that was raised during the planning board was for school bus stops, to have some language to incorporate into the development agreement that we would coordinate with the school board to make sure that we have adequate bus stops for the kids and the children in Grand Landings. And those are all incorporated into the next item, into the master plan development agreement.
Wish to make comments, Mr. Schmento?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Michael Schmento for the applicant, just for clarity for some of the community issues. The amenities, they've discussed the amenity issue with the developer many times. They are continuing in discussion, but the PUD also provides, as does the city ordinance says, that for every 1,000 residents, that a developer must provide a certain ratio of passive and active parks. That is a requirement of the PUD and will be brought online as the community expands. There are approved for 749 units, and now we're asking for 850. But as for how many are developed, I think there's only about 160 units developed. So the amenity package that is there is there to serve the community as it is, but there will continue to be more, as is required by the PUD and city code. In addition, if you notice in the PUD, when this project started off in 2005, there's a 14-acre park that was donated to the community, not this community, the HOA community, but the city, or actually at that time it was Flagler Beach or Flagler County. So right outside the gate, there is a 14-acre parcel for parks. So that is in addition to the amenity requirements that the developer will provide, as is required in the PUD and the Land Development Code. So I hope that answers what the future may look like.
Yeah, and as far as the recycled water reuse?
Yeah, I believe we have reuse out there. Yes, Mayor.
So to your questions, Mr. Mayor, we do.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for council at this time that they have? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve this ordinance.
I'll second.
Moved in second. If all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number G5 is an ordinance.
Yes, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast order, providing for an amendment to the official zoning map as established in Section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. It's for certain real property generally located south of the Flagler County Airport, west of Seminole Woods Parkway, and east of Belterra Boulevard, more particularly described in the exhibit attached to the ordinance as Exhibit A. It's to amend the Grand Landings Master Plan Development or MPD agreement by increasing the allowed number of single-family detached or attached homes within the MPD from 749 to 890, and allow the developer the option of developing all or a portion of the commercial acreage as multifamily residential, MFR2. This ordinance provides for conflict severability, providing for non-codification for an effective date. Madam Mayor, council, this is a quasi-judicial matter, so if there have been any ex parte communications since the first reading, this being the second reading, those should be disclosed at this time.
Any quasi-judicial? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. This is the second reading. Since the last public hearing, and as recommended for approval at the first hearing, we have incorporated the few changes that were recommended by planning board. One is having the construction entrance at the next phase, have an additional construction entrance, lowering the height of the proposed multifamily buildings that are outside of the gated community with the conversion, clarification of the conversion factor from the commercial to the residential, and also, again, with the coordinating with the school board during the process of where some viable locations for bus stops for the children. And again, this second reading, we are here for your question, also the applicant.
The applicant wish to make any comment at this time? Okay. Counsel, any questions at this time on this agenda item?
Yeah, I have a question. The first thing is, I'm very sympathetic to the residents out there with regards to the current amenities out there. I flew over Grand Landing last week. I was on another mission, but I circled over the pool area there, and I counted the 10 sparking spots in front of that facility, and the size of the pool certainly, from my perspective as a professional ocean rescue guy, is woefully inadequate for the numbers of people that would be out there. But that being said, my bigger question is, what have we done as a city to plan for the extended growth in terms of our roads out there and the capacity to handle the extra traffic that's going to be coming to our neighborhood out there off of Seminole Woods and off of 100 and then the back road on Belterra? I just want to make sure that staff has visioned out and prepared for the extra motor vehicles that'll be on our roadways.
Yes. And we do. Number one, from a short-range planning standpoint, every time we have a plat or site plan, and also for the comprehensive land use plan, we are looking out and we are looking at current of looking at traffic studies and seeing what the need of the community is as far as transportation. From a long-range standpoint, you know, where we put the nice traffic counts on the road, we do that every two years to monitor the traffic and the traffic flow because it's always changing, so we do that every two years. As far as this specific area, you know, it's been a long-term, from a long-range plan standing point, to look at different opportunities in this area, you know, to take citation and try to expand citation to the east or to the east for, to have a little bit more traffic flow. We're actually talking with the developer from a long-range plan as this develops out and looking at the potential of taking citation and expanding citation, not going through the neighborhood, but having a public road for public access that would help the traffic flow, that also help the safety aspect of it, where, you know, if there's an emergency or trying to get services, you have better flow. So those type of things, yes, sir, we constantly look at the long-range plans of transportation, not only, you know, long-range, but also when a plan comes in, we want to make sure that the flow is well and, you know, and the transportation is adequate. So we are looking at it.
That's good, because that's a major concern, the safety. And I know that in our workshop last time, we talked about the access to our emergency vehicles to get in there, and of course, you know, with the additional entrance way for the construction people, I can see that towards the end of the project when they're done as another road to egress out of the facility or entrance. And I just want to make another comment, going back to the amenities that the people have. I hope that the developer of this project has heard the residents loud and clear. Now, it's not a government situation. This becomes a civil matter between the residents there and the developer, but, you know, just to do the right thing and in good faith type of deal, I hope that they'll work with the people. That's my comment.
Counsel, any other comments at this time? Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number G5? Please do so at this time.
Well, you already know who I am and where I live, so I'll skip that. You know, I kind of figured out that this whole improvement process and the development kind of gets down to one thing, and that is money. And obviously, I believe the city is very much in favor of the increase. It is a private community, which actually is very favorable toward the city because you don't have to maintain the streets in there. You basically don't have to maintain or provide security, sheriff, that type of thing on a regular basis. If we want the sheriff in there to patrol, we have to pay to have him come in there. So it's a benefit, and the tax assessor, when he figures out the tax bill, is able to put a factor on a house that is built in Grand Landings versus, let's say, in the P section, has a factor applied to it that increases the value, and you're able to get more taxes out of there because it's a gated community and you can provide less services. So, for example, the 141 homes, based on the current impact fees, will add, just 141 additional homes will add $2,115,000 to your coffers. Pretty nice. It'll also add close to a half a million dollars a year in taxes, just for the increase of the 141 homes. Now, I'm convinced that the developer has, his primary focus is on profit, not on the well-being of the community. Not that he doesn't care about it, but that's way down the list. And unless the community gets help from you, our elected officials, and I say that kind of lovingly because I feel the only leverage we have is that we're voters and we have good memories. So I appeal to you to be serious about the things that we've tried to demonstrate. I sat outside the gate area for a week and did a survey because we were having a lot of issues with the gate, and found out that the gate system is totally inadequate. It's the system that got turned over from the developer to the HOA about a year and a half ago. It's antiquated. It will not support the current population, and it certainly will not support the future population, but when approached about helping to upgrade it, he said, "No way." So I'm convinced that without your help on some of these issues, you know, we're just not going to make it. I support the amendment. That's been proposed.
Sir, thank you.
I just don't support it without...
Thank you for comments.
...the additional help.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. Jaclyn Centafanti. I also live in Grand Landings, and I'm actually here today on behalf of the Board of Directors. We met recently after the last meeting, and in between that time, we had a meeting with the developer, expressed some of our concerns, and we were able to kind of hash out some of the things that have been brought up today. Not everything, of course, and so we still have some concerns and all of that, but I'm here today to just formally say that the Board of Directors is in support of this amendment. And again, we do still have, we do still have some areas of concern and some requests regarding future build-out, such as an amenity center, such as some additional parking, the security with the gate, help with the gate and all of that. So what we've done is put together a list. I'll leave a copy with you. We have a list as well for Mr. Douglas, and we'll send a certified copy as well. But just wanted to let you know that we did meet, and as a Board of Directors and with a lot of residents in attendance at that meeting, we're able to kind of decide that we don't want to come up and say we just blatantly don't support this. We're here, we know that growth is inevitable. We just want to be sure that it's cautious, that it's purposeful, and just to continue the, we love where we live, and we think that we just want to continue it to be great.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jack Carroll from Palm Coast. If you're going to add more homes, let me ask you, where does this property come from? Do they decrease the other homes to make room for the additional homes? Or do they have the land, the property, just standing by in a case like this? I'm just curious where that extra property comes from when they add more homes to a situation? Thank you.
Your comments. Next speaker. And I'll close public comment. Just for the first speaker, the sheriff's department is required to provide service. We, as taxpayers, pay that bill. So does the county. So our first responders are required to respond to gated communities without extra payment as well. I'm sorry, we're not arguing back and forth. That's not appropriate. I'm answering your questions, and I'm stating for the record what is accurate. I live in a gated community. We don't pay extra fees. Grand Haven is a private gated community. They don't pay extra fees. The sheriff provides service back there, just as he does to every single resident in this community. There were 90,000 residents in this community, and so just because you have a gate in it doesn't mean that services are not provided. That's just not true. And there is a cost to that. There is an ongoing cost to that. And I understand your math and the increase of revenue to the city, but I can assure you that the revenue that would be offset to this, of the cost of services provided to the residents, long-term, does not equate to that. We make decisions based on the facts that are presented to us. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, and we are making those decisions based on the evidence presented to us. And as far as the compromise, you've received a letter of issues outstanding. We'll continue to work with the developer on those issues. And as far as Mr. Carroll's comments, how does this happen? Does the land, yes, the property owner owns this whole parcel, and we make presentations and proposals. They come in, staff assesses those areas to see if there's adequate space to do so, and those conversations take place during the process itself. Okay. Any other questions or comments from our council? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make it. We accept this ordinance as read.
Moved in second. If all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number G6 is another ordinance. Mr. Reishman.
Yes, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast order, amending Article 2, City Council, Section 37, to add a new subsection entitled Electronic Campaign Filing of the City of Palm Coast Code of Ordinances Providing for Severability, Codification, Conflicts, and Effective Date. First reading.
Hi, Mayor, City Council, Virginia Smith. This will, amendment is to make the candidate's life a little bit easier and also for the city to become a little bit more transparent, easier access for all the campaign filing reports to be online through the Supervisor of Elections website for our city elections.
Counsel, any questions at this time? Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number G6? Please do so at this time.
My name is Celia Buglisi, and due to the fact that I've been for many years with two different Supervisor of Elections, a volunteer prison clerk on elections, I know how the system works, and the one thing is I will appreciate the city, this movement, because it will add transparency to our elections, and I deeply appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Take it back to this council. Undertain a motion.
I'll make that motion that we accept the ordinance as read.
I'll second.
Moved in second. If all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number I-7 is a resolution approving final nuisance abatement assessment.
Yes. Barbara Grossman. This is another mechanism that we have to get compliance with violations. Sorry, excuse me. To get compliance, normally these are unoccupied properties and/or vacant lots such as hazardous trees, overgrown conditions, covering of a pool, that type of item. So we remedy this. we remedy the situation, and then at the end of the, in May, it goes on the tax roll to be assessed as a special assessment, and that's another tool in our toolbox to get compliance.
Counsel, any questions on this item? Okay. I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number I seven? Please do so at this time.
Yes, Celia Buglisi. I am, again, I am really for Mrs. Barbara Grossman's proposal, or whatever the department is a great thing, because we do have issues. Now, I just missed the beginning of her explanation, and I, I'm sorry, I don't know if she mentioned problems with crime on some of these houses, properties, which is one of the things that we were looking as residents for a nuisance declaration for the home, because they do have weather prostitution, drug dealings, and other using the homes for those. So is that part of the nuisance abatement? I will really, that's the most important for us, because we have gone through one of that, and thanks to the shared, it was resolved. Took us two years. So, but anyway, that's what I wanted to know, because I missed what she started saying, Barbara. She does a great job, by the way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Okay, closed public comment. Barbara, if you can respond, please.
The, we don't get involved in the criminal aspect of it. What we would do is we would contact our liaison, Commander Williams, and we would take appropriate action that way and keep each, both code enforcement and the Flagler County Sheriff's Department in the loop as to what's going on.
Counsel, any other questions or comments at this time?
I would like to echo Celia's comment that Barbara is the one that we love to hate. You know, she's in that position, but she's fantastic at what she does, and, you know, I support her 105 percent.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for agenda item number I seven.
I'll make that.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number I eight is a resolution approving the Old Kings Road Special Assessment Rule to be transmitted to the Flagler County Tax Collector.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. That is our annual road that goes to the tax collector. That is for the repayment of the special assessment on Old Kings Road, Phase One.
Counsel, any questions at this time? Seeing none, I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number I eight? Please do so at this time.
I just have a question on this. When they're saying special assessment role, is this to be paid by the county or by the people that own on Old Kings Road?
Thank you. Next speaker. Seeing none, I'll close public comment.
The repayment is from the property owners of the benefited property.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve this resolution. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, passes unanimously. Agenda, unmember J, is a consent agenda item. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on either nine, 10, or 11? Please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Agenda item number K is public participation. If you've not spoken at the beginning of the meeting, this is a chance for you to speak now. It's items that are not on the agenda. You have up to three minutes. Please state your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin.
Good morning, Robin McDonald, Palm Coast. A couple of weeks ago, I requested some figures from the Palm Harbor Golf Course, and due to a glitch, we didn't, I didn't get them, but the city did provide me this morning, so I want to thank Virginia for that. I go back to 2015, because that's when I moved here, and according to these documents, in 2015, the expenditures that exceeded revenue for 2015 was $345,000. In '16, we went to 357. In '17, we went to 455. And in '18, somebody must be doing a good job, because we only went to 229. So by my quick calculations, in the last four years, we probably lost, or we paid close to $1,000,500 in four years, if these figures are correct, and I'm reading this paperwork accurately. About a month ago, there was a representative from the Flagler County Sheriff, and he requested to add six police officers to our staff. And the comments were made that, well, we don't know where we're going to get the money, and, you know, some things may have to get cut, like I said. And I don't mean to pick on the mayor, but she was the one that publicly admitted that golf courses and things like that are an amenity to the city. And my comments that I made at a meeting a while back was, if I'm coming to the city, I'm going to check out the schools, the safety of the city, taxes, and I'm seeing that we're paying, or we've paid over the last four years, $1,000,500 to a golf course. I think that it's a lot more important to put more cops on the street than it is to support a golf course. And like I said, every one of us woke up this morning, and our house hadn't been robbed, our car wasn't broken into, our family wasn't attacked, because these guys did their job. And we need to put more cops on the street, more so than we need to have a golf course that we're losing money every single solitary year for the last four years.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Mayor, if I could, just to correct a comment that I made earlier.
No, sir, you, this is, that's an agenda item. You cannot come up and retort an agenda item, sir. This is public comment on items not on the agenda.
Well, it wasn't toward the builder. It was toward the sheriff's thing.
Not on the agenda item, sir. You've already had your time to speak on the agenda item. Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning again, George Mayo, Palm Coast. At the last meeting, I spoke about Stop the Bleed kits and like to see them distributed. Unfortunately, mayor, you weren't able to attend. You weren't here. Mr. Clufus agreed, and what I see is an A E D was just donated for the courts up there, Indian, whatever. I had asked, and I think it would be appropriate, and I asked the county to, and they have done this. They have inserted a Stop the Bleed kit in each container wherever there is an A E D. And I know the chief has said that all the ambulances, E M Ts have them, but if you had one on hand, the one, two, three minutes that it takes for an E M T to get there, if somebody can use a Stop the Bleed kit until they get there, could mean the difference between life and death. So I'm asking wherever the city has an A E D, whether it's in City Hall, other administrative buildings, courts, sports courts, wherever we have an A E D, I know the city was given some by the county to insert a Stop the Bleed kit in each and every one of them. Please. Thank you.
Your comments. Next speaker. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Have you followed up, Matt, with Mr. Mayor's request about a Stop the Bleed kit?
Yes, mayor. I'm actually in communication with the Red Cross. If Mr. Mayor has other, I'll catch him after the meeting with other suggestions. When I Googled it to look at who I would speak with, it was American Red Cross, and see if we can't get those kits for our, that would fit within our A E D containers, but I'd be happy to circle back.
I know that students over at our community problem-solving team also had a Stop the Bleed kit where they were preparing those. If you could speak with the superintendent, I think that'd be very helpful. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the comments and the speakers. We will now open up to agenda item number 11, which is discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda.
I had planned to surprise you today with a video. Unfortunately, we found one or two glitches, and this is the video that will be attached and incorporated into the letter that we're sending out to all of those members that we selected from the National Business Aviation Association. This is my fishing expedition to see if I can't bring some of them down here to our neck of the woods from the snow belt. And so perhaps at our workshop, the video will be ready. It's pretty good, you know, and I think you guys will really appreciate it. I know the staff has worked. It was a collaborative effort. It wasn't just me. I just gave the concept and I let them roll with it, and they've done an outstanding job. I think our city manager was pretty well pleased with the two, now that we fixed the glitches.
We're fixing the glitches, yes.
Yeah, you know, and I'm excited about the opportunity to hopefully get one or two of these companies or more, because we've targeted companies of a size of 500 or less. And with the winters that they've had in the last two years, and this letter will go out at the beginning of the fall, it'll be food for thought. And the goal that I have is to bring in companies that will pay a living wage, you know, minimum $20 an hour to start, but professional, so that we can have something that our local students that graduate from college can look at coming and staying home as a career. So I'll keep you posted.
Thank you.
I just have two thank yous, and they go, they both go to Jack Howell. One thank you, it's for the representatives on the League of Cities, when none of us could do it. You are graceful enough to have a spot. The other one, it's the job you're doing with Inz and Flight, and I read that this week, Gigi, you know, that's, I'm so proud of you on that.
Well, did you say the other one? Juan?
Juan and Gigi.
Yeah.
I'm very proud of you. Thank you for, keep up the good work, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I was going to say that I didn't appreciate Jack's efforts on those two areas, but it seems that, no, I can only echo Eddie's comments, and I have nothing further.
Okay, and I have nothing at this time. Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Nothing, mayor.
Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
Nothing, mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Motion to adjourn. Thank you.